Problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom and Channel 8. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID number 897-9080-0793, or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carley Antonellis, Assistant Town Manager at ATM@air.mass.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 100, prior to this meeting. If I could ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, do we have any amendments to the agenda tonight?
Nope. I don't have any. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. All right, a few announcements. The annual town election will take place Tuesday, May 9, 2023, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in the Great Hall, second floor, Town Hall. The following are current board and committee vacancies. Affordable Housing Committee, one seat, two alternates. Capital Planning Committee, one seat. Finance Committee, one seat. Rate Review Committee, one seat. Zoning Board of Appeals, one alternate. Please contact the Select Board's office at 978-772-8220, extension 100, or ATM@air.ma.us for more information. And, save the date. May 27, Saturday, 9:00 a.m., American Legion Post 139 will be hosting the Memorial Day Parade. For more information, I think we will be posting, we have posted, or we will post more information as far as like what time they'll be at Woodlawn and at St. Mary's for the cemetery processions, and the parade will start at the DPW. Okay? All right. With that, is there anybody here for public input? Yes, Dennis, come on down.
So thanks, or, oh, I'm sorry, Dennis Curran, Pleasant Street and Air.
Thank you.
So this information recently came to my attention, and I thought it was something important that the board ought to be aware of. You may be aware of it already, but if not, I think the public might benefit from this. There was a recent article in the Harvard Press, small-town newspaper regarding the opioid allocation settlement, which has recently started to flow from the feds to the states and down to the neighboring communities. First, let me say that I would like to publicly thank the reporter on this, Joan Eliessel, who is a Harvard resident, for the intellectual integrity and the ethical integrity involved in disclosing this information to the public. I have copies of the articles here, and this is, you know, newspaper copy, so there's nothing unusual about this. The gist of it is that as the money from the, as the dispersments from the opioid-related settlement, you know, the, I think tens of billions of dollars, which the opioid, which the drug company settled with the states regarding opioid-related hazards and harms, has now started to flow. How that money was allocated to the different towns seems highly questionable, at least highly questionable, and exactly how this happened is unclear. So, the gist of this is that the town of Harvard, which had three, which has a smaller population than Air, and had three opioid-related deaths during the period of time that we're considering, will be receiving $346,114 as a result of the opioid-related settlement. The town of Air, which had 18 opioid-related deaths and has a higher population, will be receiving $37,681.
Not surprising, not surprising, and I'm just gonna segue just slightly, because when you look at like the lottery, okay, the money coming to the lottery, Harvard doesn't sell lottery tickets, Air does, so it means everybody from Harvard is driving into Air to get their tickets, and Harvard gets a bigger disbursement, and we actually tried to approach Senator Eldridge about that a couple of months ago. So, I'm at, what I'm doing is adding on to, you're right, what's going on.
Yeah, so, the, and again, just to quote from the newspaper article, "Air's share is about a tenth of the size of Harvard's despite having the highest number of opioid-related deaths and EMS incidents of any neighboring town." Now, this is not only, I mean, this seems to, there are other, there are other instances of this throughout the state. The disparity between Harvard and Air is not the only disparity throughout the state. And there's more money to come, about $277,000 more will be going to Harvard. How much of that portion will be coming to Air seems unclear at this point. So, so my ask, so I have two. One is, how did this happen? That is, what was the nature of the allocation such that this was allowed to occur? And it appears, and again, you've, you know, obviously you can read the article, the spokesperson at the Attorney General's Office said the state deferred to a model called the Plaintiff's Executive Committee, which was a group of lawyers and experts, did a study on national opioid allocation, developed the allocation model based on federal data on opioid use disorder, overdose deaths, and opioid shipments. But clearly, something has gone wrong, given the level of disparity. So I would ask if the Board of Selectmen could reach out to our state reps and state senator to see if they can help us determine how it is that this level of disparity exists. And remember now, this article is written by somebody who in Harvard, who kind of instinctively recognized the inequity in here. And secondly, how is the money going to be used? To their credit, it appears that the town of Harvard, their Department of Public Health may be reaching out to some of the surrounding communities out of their willingness to share some of these proceeds, because they frankly cannot understand why it is that they would receive such a, such an amount, and how are they going to equitably distribute it? So it may be that for our Department of Public Health, perhaps they could reach out to their colleagues in Harvard and some of the other surrounding towns and see if that money can be pooled to the benefit of all. I don't know how that, you know, the precise mechanisms by which that might occur, but clearly, it may benefit Air. So that's pretty much it. So, and again, I would be, I mean, all I know is what's in the article, but I would be happy to advocate if you want somebody to talk to our state senators, but I think that coming from you folks, it may carry more weight.
It will carry some weight, but I don't think you should dismiss your weight as a resident. And so I would also urge the residents of this town to get ahold of Representative Senna and also Senator Eldridge with this question on this. And, you know, we will discuss as far as, I think it's not a bad idea for us to reach out either. But I do think that if everybody kind of speaks up, that weighs even more. So, thank you.
Yeah, sure, and what I would say is that the, for them, whoever they are, to simply say, well, that was the allocation model, or that is not, is not sufficient justification in my mind.
I agree. I agree.
And if they, if that's the reason that it's not sufficient, so, we'll leave it there, and I hope to maybe hear from you in the future about how things are going to proceed.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, I think that that is something that we should probably
You should follow up.
Follow up on that. So, Robert, maybe for the next meeting, we could maybe have a draft, or, or like a further step of, to what we want to do?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would offer two things. I think, one, we'll verify all of the numbers and find out about the, the allocation piece. And then, Mr. Curran, through the chair, your second question, how, how is the money to be used? Through the chair, at this point, the funds we have received, there's been no decision made yet, obviously, the funding has to be used for opioid-related relief, you know, programs and so forth, we'll put together something. And we're also currently looking already to the fall town, meaning there's the ability to create, you know, a separate fund for these. So, for the next meeting, let's, we can get some more information on the allocation mechanism and report that back.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else here for public input? Okay, so with that, I invite Dr. Katie Petrazzi, Director of the Air Council on Aging.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, thanks for having me. The Air Senior Center received an anonymous
Could you speak up a little bit?
Oh, sorry, the Air Senior Center received an anonymous donation in the amount of $2,000. So I'm here to ask the Select Board to accept that donation.
Okay, and according to the packet, there was no restrictions placed on this donation?
Correct.
Okay. All right, any questions?
No questions.
I have no questions.
All right.
Thank you to whoever sent it, that was really, really very nice of you.
We will look forward to putting it to good use.
Okay.
I'll make a motion at the Air Select Board, accepting a gift in the amount of $2,000 from an anonymous donor for the Air Council on Aging.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Take the money. Cash the check. All right. Okay, next, we have a transfer of a Class II license, 77 Fitchburg Road. Do we have the representatives here? Yep, come on down.
Good evening, everyone.
Yeah, you can pull up a chair with you, sorry. And then just make sure you speak up.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Edward Gukasov, I'm the owner and operator of Broadway Motoring, trying to apply for a Class II used car dealer license in your town to start my, I'm just moving my operations from Arlington to Air, and Ed currently holds the Class II used car dealer license at that location, he's willing to give it up on it, and so I can obtain same license as him.
Okay. All right, what made you pick Air from Arlington?
I live in Littleton.
Oh, okay.
I have three kids, and for me, travel takes a lot of time, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
It's only 15 minutes away from my home, which I love it.
Okay, well, that's, that's a good reason.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just, I talked to, you know, Charlie, the building commissioner, the zoning is fine, it's a current use at the location, you know, they've submitted a floor plan, so everything looks good from the, on the Town Hall side.
Okay, so it's just a transfer of a business?
Yep.
Okay, and you're just tired?
Well, I recently just got it, but I think that Ed, it would be a much better option to run a car dealership out of that location instead of me, he's got many more years' experience, so I'd rather lease the building to him and give him a shot at it.
Sounds like good reasons.
Excellent.
Anybody have any questions?
No, no questions.
I have no questions.
I'll make a motion that the board approve the transfer of Class II license for 77 Fitchburg Road, as presented in the package.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye, congratulations.
Congrats.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll give you a call tomorrow, and I'll get you the paperwork.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Good. All right, next up, Chuck Schultz, Facilities Director. This is the one I've been looking forward to. Ha ha! Can't ignore me now, ha!
I would never ignore you.
Yeah, I'm gonna just share the screen so people at home can see it as well.
Click on the PowerPoint on the bottom there.
Oh, you already have it open. Oh, that's mine, which one? This?
Yep, there we go.
What is that?
All right.
And then, right here, to move them.
Got it, perfect. All right, thank you for having me here tonight. I wanted to briefly touch base on a couple of projects that would be taking place in FY24, then go into our timeline and schedule for the Great Hall Acoustical Project. So slide one. Our Town Hall is currently bursting at the seams for much-needed storage and meeting space. The Facilities Department feels renovating our out-of-date single cubicle area with three separate cubicle spaces in the same footprint will give us a comprehensive approach to resolving our storage and meeting room needs without any major construction. As you can see in the top, the image shows our election and custodian supplies overflowing into the Great Hall, and also the cubicle area that houses the meeting room, filing cabinets, and additional overflow storage. The goal is to create three separate closed-door areas with six-to-eight-foot-high acoustical panels. The meeting room will be housed in the right corner of the Great Hall, so against the walls itself, with sound dampening flooring. This design will also include multiple flex workstations and a locked-door storage area. So slide two. So, a quick overview of the wall repairs, I'll also include an FY24 capital improvement. Significant water damage occurred in FY22 before the FY23 roof and gutter repairs resolved this issue. I have since repaired these walls in-house to keep them from being an eyesore until the funding is available to have them freshly resolved, renovated in FY24. So, the first two slides were a brief overview of the FY24 capital improvements taking place in the Great Hall. The next two slides outline two projects we are hoping to submit for this fall's Green Community Competitive Grant application. Project one is the window weatherization, project two is the attic insulation. My goal tonight isn't to clash against any information I was collecting in the past, but rather to present the material I've been able to collect over the past few years to help with the unintrusive air infiltration happening due to the gaps in the window sills and sashes, along with the non-existing weatherization. I'm gonna move forward to the next slide to show the building envelope audits that Rise Engineering and National Grid Pex Vender had prepared for our grant request. The first project outlined is the weather, is a weather stripping needed to reduce the air infiltration within the window frames. So, it kind of outlines the 58 windows within the building, getting weather stripping on the top and bottom of the bottom part of the windows, including bristles that would go to the side to keep the air from coming in and out. The second project kind of speaks for itself, we don't have any insulation in the attics. So, kind of go back to the picture from the, oh, I'm sorry. So this is like our attic space up here.
Thanks.
And as you can see, we don't have any insulation in the attic space. On the bottom left is a quick cost breakdown and possible grant funding. So, through the possible grant requests, the attic insulation would pretty much possibly be, fully be covered through the grant, but the windows themselves would be more like a 50-50 split, so town matching funding would be needed to do a project like that. And just want to go back to the other slide real quick, this is kind of a cost breakdown of what we are saving every year if we did move forward the projects. The windows look at about $5.16 a year in savings, with a 78-year payoff year by year for the project itself, and then the attic insulation would save right under $1,000 a year with a 43-year payoff for that part of the project. The last two slides of our presentation tonight includes the must-anticipated Great Hall Acoustical Multimedia renovation. So step one, working with Restalti Acoustical Multimedia to analyze and engineer an acoustical design that will work within the Great Hall footprint. Step two would be public input and presenting the design to the Mass Historical Commission. Step three, if designs are approved at the local and state levels, presented to the Capitol Committee for possible town approval. And step four would be creating an invitation for bid, completing the work, and letting the public enjoy the new acoustical multimedia system. I understand this two-year timeline.
He's not done, he's not done.
I understand this two-year timeline is hard to take in, but there are major building repairs and inspections needed before I feel comfortable installing acoustical panels to the ceiling and walls of the Great Hall, along with multiple approval platforms needed before we can move forward with this project. Thank you for allowing me this time tonight with you guys to present these updates to the Select Board, and I'd love to answer any questions or concerns.
Very good, your first presentation, very good, very good.
I do a lot of talking, so I figured if I wrote it down, it might go straight to the point.
So, so a couple of questions, which you may have actually addressed, and I, and I missed it, but, so I noticed, too, you have like metal pieces hanging from the ceiling. Honestly, I'm not even sure how long they've been there, they've probably been there for years. But anyways, there's like curtaining that you can get, that you can hang, looks pretty, and also helps with acoustics.
So, we've kind of looked into it, the biggest thing is, is the construction needed for the sprinkler system. So like when we did the, when we did, looked into the cubicle space, I wanted to put sound dampening above it to help with noise and stuff, talking to the builder inspector and other local people like that, they said you would have to bring the sprinkler system underneath as well, so it's not, not doable, there just would be some construction.
Ah, okay, all right. So, next question, and this, I'm gonna kind of segue to Robert a little bit. It's been years since we addressed getting new windows, okay? So, we couldn't before, because the person in charge of the historical buildings out in Cambridge liked the mix in any other town that the, that the windows would be, which was partly wood, okay, because it's got to be a certain mixture, I don't remember the exact mixture, but he liked it in every other town except for the town of Air. So I'm wondering, no, it's a true story, I know you're like, really, and I'm like, no, it's a true story. I'm wondering if, has enough time gone by that we should also rebroach that subject? Because that would also help with this issue, too.
Madam Chair, yes, the answer, the short answer would be yes, because as Mr. Schultz mentioned earlier, some of the Great Hall improvements will have to touch base with them on anyway, so it has been a considerable time since we last looked at the windows, so we can definitely touch base with them.
Excellent, excellent, okay. Does anybody else have any other questions?
No, no other questions.
So you're saying it's gonna take two years?
It could, I just want to be honest about it, I don't want to say I'm gonna get it done tomorrow and it really won't. It's, it's a big project, it could cost a lot of money. I did go to the other local towns, Harvard, Groin, a couple of other ones, to look at their great halls. Groin did chop theirs up into meeting room space, but Harvard did have a, you know, a great hall kind of like ours, but about half the size, maybe a third of the size, and looked at what they had for multimedia setup and sound dampening, and, yeah, it's very doable, it's just, it's, it's gonna be a bit of a process, I just want to be honest.
So question?
Yeah.
And sound, like, you know, for the flooring and whatnot, and I'm just throwing out thoughts at this point. So, you know, occasionally, you know, the Town Hall gets kind of rented out, per se, by, well, all you, well, the acoustics, the choir, the tuba choir and things like that, you know, but because of even the sound of, it always sounds like somebody's bowling up there.
Yes.
You know, so is there like, you know, is it possible to even get like a, kind of a carpet that can be rolled out once in a while for this type of stuff, too?
So Robert has brought that up to me in the past, so I actually saw a really nice Oriental rug that Harvard had in their Town Hall. It would be, it could work and would be awesome, I would have to do a little more research on it to give you a definitive answer on it, but I don't see why we couldn't come up with something like that in our overall design when we do this project. There could be some ADA stuff going on where it would have to be roll-up for when we do elections, because it would maybe cause an uneven service with the
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Election
Yeah, yeah.
We have, and the booths themselves, but I'm sure with the overall scope of this project, something like that is not a big deal to add into it.
Okay, all right. Pauline?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, and, um, one comment, two questions. When Chuck was doing his slideshow presentation, it wasn't visible on your Zoom. I'd looked at it already, so I wasn't concerned, but that might be something you want to look at, so nobody who might be watching or watch later will see the presentation, just kept quiet.
Okay.
Chuck, and Madam Chair, questions for Chuck, if I may?
Mm-hmm.
The insulation, does the town, is the town eligible for Mass Save options? I know you're really good at looking into that kind of stuff.
We haven't looked through Mass Save, but we have looked through the Department of Energy Resources, and as of right now, the auditors feel that it could be fully paid for through our Green Community Grant, but it is a competitive grant, so there's no guarantees in it, but we will be putting our best foot forward to get it funded through that particular grant.
Which is awesome, but I can tell you, Mass Save is still giving away, for lack of a better term, insulation to people who apply, or to, yeah, people, residents, who apply to them for loans and so on for heat pumps, and just throw that out there. The other question is probably more for Robert. We talked Tuesday about acoustics in the meeting room that you're in right now, none of the proposals that Chuck is making tonight have anything to do with the meeting room. Is that a separate topic that will be discussed in the future?
Oh, through, through the chair, yes, unless, and I don't want to put, Chuck, unless you want to speak to the, some of the plans for in here on acoustics.
Absolutely, so on a sidebar, with the company we're gonna be working with, the Great Hall, they're gonna take a look at this room as well. It might not be in the same scope of work as the Great Hall, but we definitely are gonna keep moving forward with the acoustics in this room, it's as needed as it is up in the Great Hall. And additionally, I wanted to look at possible outdoor, maybe permanent speakers or something. I, that's, that's a big thing to say with historical restrictions and stuff like that, but maybe something that can be used outdoors, set up and set up all the speakers and bring them in and out and do stuff like that.
Well, I never even paid attention to the acoustics in here, so, okay.
Yeah, Madam
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just to add, yeah, we definitely, in speaking with Chuck, want to look at the acoustics down here as well, in, in the room, especially for some folks, you know, in the back and so forth, so that will be looked at when they come to do the analysis upstairs.
Excellent, all right, great, any other questions?
Nope.
No questions, thank you.
Thanks, Chuck.
Very good, Chuck, we're gonna invite you again.
All right, anytime. Yeah, we got it.
All right. Dan. Hi, how are you?
Pretty good. Thank you for allowing me to present tonight. No, I'm just, I'm gonna check a little. So, three items on my report tonight, and the first is an update on the West Main Street Mass Works, West Air Village project.
That's caused quite a little fuss.
So I've heard. So, I put together a quick presentation, we can roll through that and I can share with you.
I'm sorry, I lost my mind there. I hate that bar.
There we go.
Oh, this, is this you or Chuck?
No, no, no.
Yeah, okay. Sorry.
Okay. So, West Main Street, the Mass Works project, just a project update on the West Air Village. So the major items that are remaining out there, so last year predominantly the utilities were done, and then we had the winter shutdown, and this year we're working on the streetscape. So, ongoing is curbing sidewalks and driveway aprons.
Sorry, Dan, can I interrupt a moment? So Pauline, as her end up, again, I want to get the presentations.
Yeah, I'm very, very sorry to interrupt, I know this is an important topic for a lot of people. We can't see, we, those of us on Zoom, I don't know who is, all we see is the USB menu, no screenshots. Carley, your name is on the, the E-drive.
Sorry to interrupt.
There's absolutely nothing showing other than, other stuff.
All right, we're gonna look at it, because it says on our screen that it's sharing, so Cindy's gonna take a look at it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Start Zoom up, or just, no, just.
There'll be two inches of top course final paving, which will hopefully occur later this month or early next month, and then obviously followed by line striping signage. Those are really the major items. There's other things to clean up, backfill behind walks, et cetera. So completion will be by June 30th and likely sooner. This week's weather doesn't help it, but they're moving along pretty good, so go ahead. So here's just some photos, this was from about a week ago of the curbing installation. So, right here, this is from the Devon's Plaza looking toward Burbank Gate. You can see the new bus stop for the MART bus. There's gonna be a bus shelter right where Carly's pointer was in the gravel as well, so you can go to the next. This is from the same location but looking eastward, so you can see Devon's Plaza on the right sidewalk there. Keep going. And then, this is.
This is where I have a question.
Okay. So this one, these is the, the curb extensions in this location here. There's two sets of those for the pedestrian crossing, and, and I'll get more into those as we go along. I don't know if you want to ask a question or let me finish.
So I'll wait, but we're gonna come back to this photo.
Okay. And then this is another picture of it, looking westbound from the other side of Karen's kitchen. Keep going. And then this is.
This is where I have a question.
Okay. So this one, these is the, the curb extensions in this location here. There's two sets of those for the pedestrian crossing, and, and I'll get more into those as we go along. I don't know if you want to ask a question or let me finish.
So I'll wait, but we're gonna come back to this photo.
Okay. And then this is another picture of it, looking westbound from the other side of Karen's kitchen. Keep going. And then this is eastbound looking in the, I guess this would be the West Air Village, was it called the Street Core? Not the core, this.
Village.
Village. Not the Village Center, but the, outside the Village Center area. So, next slide. So back when this was designed, back in 2020, 2021, the process included, you know, a design that would fit the Village Core and Village Street, that's the term I was looking for. And so the design went through in accordance with these, these principles. So go ahead, Carly. So, in your Village Core area, the green area highlighted on the map here, so it's from the extent of Devon's Plaza West to the Air Animal Medical Center. So that area there, there's on-street parking and shared travel bike lanes, I have a slide showing all this, and, and pedestrian sidewalks. In the yellow area, that's the Village Street area, it has sidewalks, dedicated bike lanes and travel lanes, so keep going. So in, as I was just kind of mentioning, the Village Core, so it's the heart of the foreign-based district, it's, you know, supposed to be the area where you're gonna have storefronts and, and housing above those storefronts. And so it consists of the on-street parking, the shared lanes for bikes and, and vehicles, and also the pedestrian safer crossings and, and sidewalks. So Village Core here.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go, you can keep, go to the next one. So this is just a, a shot of the design plan showing the striping, so it's gonna be striped for parking, on-street parking, and then also we have the curb extension there with the crossing. Next. Village Street areas, as I mentioned, dedicated bike lanes, dedicated vehicle lanes and sidewalks, and this is kind of the remaining 2,000 feet of the corridor, the other section was about 500 feet in the core. Go ahead. And here's just a quick grab of a section of the corridor showing the dedicated bike lanes, much like, it's very similar to East, East Main Street in this section. So, and then kind of an example, as we, we talk about these curb extensions, I realize they're new to town. So this is an example in West Acton, I don't know if many of you have been there near True West Brewing. They do have curb extensions here as well for pedestrian crossing and on-street parking, so it's very similar to what's going on at the, the West Air Village site. You can keep going, Carly. Here's another shot of it, you see your on-street parking there and, right, going right up to the curb extension. Do, 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 another shot. And then this is as you're approaching the, that West Acton area, it's much more of a country road. Keep going. And this is also just another photo of that area. So one thing I will mention on the, the curb extensions that when we.
Go back to that photo I was talking about.
When we checked those extensions for their, when we measured them, the engineer had designed them at eight feet, and they're only supposed to be six feet in width. So at current, there's 22 feet of width between the curb extension, so you basically got two 11-foot lanes. But we're gonna pull that back two feet on each side to, to match what the Mass DRT design guidance is, is six feet. And so now you're gonna have 26 feet wide on either side.
Are you talking about this?
Yeah.
Okay, so where it's butted right into the road?
Right.
That, you're gonna shrink it back?
So that goes, it's going back two feet on each side.
Okay.
Because we've, we've, we found out, well, you know, we didn't catch in the design, the design engineer put together, that he, he had designed them as eight feet, and they should only be six, according to our design guidance.
Good, because I think that's been part of the real big bone of contention for a lot of people.
Yeah.
Because you really, that's very narrow. Now, I know you showed a photo where it showed a car and an 18-wheeler going side by side, but in reality, you got lucky that day. Because in reality, and I've seen it happen, and others have seen it happen, an 18-wheeler, they're gonna be like, oh, let me just move over a little bit. Okay? If you, you know, because the way it is right now, it looks like an accident waiting to happen. So you're saying that's going to get fixed?
Yeah, so those are going back.
Okay, which will also make room for, more room for a bike.
It would. It still should be, really should.
Right, but as you see it right now, you see where a bike has a little bit of width, and then all of a sudden, because that eight-feet error.
Yeah.
Then it boom, you know?
Yeah, and we should just make it clear, it's, this is, those lime paint, the lime painting out there now is for the winter, it's not the final lime painting by any means, it's, so it's kind of.
Right, but it gives us, it gives us an idea.
Yeah, type of thing, yeah.
Okay. Okay, and that budding out is for the crosswalk?
That's right.
Okay. All right, so, yeah, I think some of that's kind of gotten lost, because as you said, it was designed around '21, so that was two years ago, and now it's being put into effect. But that piece right there, it's kind of nerve-wracking, so I'm glad to hear it's gonna get fixed. So, okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, one question, so Chief Gillis here, he might be able to answer if you don't. So is the speed limit gonna be reduced in that Village area? Just given the fact that we're gonna have on-street parking and we're kind of condensing that whole segment of the road?
Yeah, so that's a great question. And we were, we just started talking about reevaluating the speed zone in there right now, which is 35. And I think that one of our, one of our goals is to evaluate that, see if we can bring that down to either a posted 30 or bring it down to a thick, general speed law of a thickly settled unposted, which would then be a, conform to the 25 mile an hour throughout town. So we gotta do some, we gotta do some work and some measurements out there to, to see, see how we can do that.
Because I think that also adds to the nervousness when you're going through a 35 miles an hour with a car coming at you at 35-ish miles an hour, you know, and everyone's kind of trying to sit through.
One blink, and it's, it's all over.
Yeah, and that's part of the, you know, part of shrinking down the roads, you know, people are naturally just gonna slow down, and that's, you know, and I think that if we can get to that thickly settled, I think we'll be in a good place.
Yeah, that shrunk out a little too much.
Thank you both, appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
One quick question, and which, you're fine, too. Are trucks really able to get in and out of that parking lot?
Of the Devon's Plaza?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, the, the curb cuts are designed in accordance with MassDOT standards, it's 24-foot wide, and it's our Town of Air regs, so commercial.
Okay, it just doesn't, visually when you're going by, you do kind of question it, so, so, you know, I kind of wanted to get that.
I did see one.
Right, so I wanted to make sure that that question got asked for people, so, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. All right.
Okay.
All right.
Next item?
Oh, yes, we have a question. And could you, could you come over a little bit forward so people can hear you and speak up?
Hi, Marcy Logan, Scully Road, right down in this neighborhood. Well, I have one question that's most important. From the March 23rd train tip that I found on Scully Road, how long is that porta potty gonna be there for?
Oh.
And who could, CSX, would they be the ones? Because I know they leave all their ketchup packets out there for their lunch, and I've been picking those up, but the porta potty is, I'm happy to call. And that kind of leads to the next thing, we just had the townwide cleanup, and this was year '20, that, this was the first time I wasn't the only resident on Scully cleaning up, I actually had the coals with me, where Larry just had like a triple bypass surgery, so Deb and I and Larry were out cleaning Scully Road. I think we did like six or eight bags of stuff, and it's all Dunkin' Donuts cups, McDonald's bags, you know, people coming out of Lempel Park and beer cans. And actually, because there's so much tractor-trailer traffic on that road, I think we found a lot of bottles with urine in it. So as I was cleaning.
Some things I just don't want to know.
Yeah, so I don't think it was my neighbors, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, pretty sure.
But I was just thinking, like, in the future, since there's so many businesses on that road, like the Blue Collar Farm, and then down Lempel Park, you got Moore's, New Co. Halling, Little League Farms, which I know is really into the environment. Maybe in the future, like, is there a way that they could show up on that Saturday and maybe contribute since they're part of our little tiny neighborhood? If that's something, not just in my neighborhood, but maybe other people that are out, you know, in other, like, Nausoia and those areas, I don't know how the trash is there, but it just kind of felt like, oh, you know, they should maybe send maybe one representative from each company, because I assume they care about the street as much as we do, to maybe help us? Because like I said, this is year '20 for me, and I'm not getting any other. And I know Larry and Deb aren't getting any other either. So I thought maybe just in the future, it might be something to suggest to the businesses in this town that they are also responsible for cleaning up their trash.
Well, I think it's a reasonable request. So, the, the first question about the porta potty, maybe we could, you know, put some.
Yeah. Where that isn't yet.
And if you do talk to CSX, could you let them know, like, when they have lunch, not to throw all their ketchup packets? Like, I always tell my sons, your mother doesn't work here, kind of thing, you know? Because I, it's not really my job, but with all of that stuff with the train and over a month, and every day they stop to take breaks, and grown men don't know that they should not litter. So, yeah, that's just, I guess, the, the litter aspect. And I will say, driving, my son was in middle school last week, I watched a tractor-trailer pull into Devon's Plaza and took out about six of your cones that were under his carriage because he could not get through that, the two openings that now exist there. So that was just something I observed, I, I watched it and was like, not only did he drive over your curb, because he took, it's kind of hard to turn something that, I don't know how long those are, like 65.
They tend to make wide turns, yeah.
Yeah, and ended up taking all the cones under his car with him. I'm sure you, you know, probably thought they were kind of switched. So I, me living in that area, that definitely is a wide enough. Like, I drive Volkswagen and I think I could just get through that opening. And the second thing with those, those cutouts, living on Scully, it's a semi-industrial residential road, and it, as we all know, it took quite a bit of my effort and time to get that on everyone's radar because of the width of the road. Main Street, West Main, is not that country road in Acton, I know exactly where that is. We have a huge industrial level of traffic that not only comes down West Main, comes down Scully, and I would love to say, I love what you guys did on Scully Road. I love how wide it is now, I drive on it and I feel safe, and my twin sons that got their license last year, I know are safe. If we could get the line down the middle, that's bonus, but I'm not gonna push it, but it did help a lot last time. So, those cutouts, I can tell you, when it snows and with plowing, based on my experience with our little Scully Road, that is gonna get even more narrow. And I know traveling on Scully Road for the past 20 years, minus like if you guys did that repair about two or three years ago, when one of those tractor-trailers crosses that line and is on your side, it is terrifying. In particular, if you have your three children or more in the car, you're both family, or even if you're by yourself. So, I drive, I drive to middle school every day and I look at those cutouts and, yeah, you're right, it is, it is an accident ready to happen, because all it takes is someone, these truck drivers, they're looking at their phone.
That's true.
They gotta see where they're going. I saw them in Scully all the time. A lot of times they're from Indiana and all over the country, and they don't even know where they're going, they're lost. So, one distraction or, you know, anything, even take a sip of their coffee, and that's all it's gonna take to wipe out whoever's on the other side of the road. Never mind when it snows, because it made Scully so much more narrow. I, I predict that that's gonna make those cutouts a little bit more narrow. And it's not the same as, as Acton, you know, it's, it's, we're in an industrial zone down there on West Main.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Shoot, what was the second question? Because I had an answer for the second question. Oh, for the second question that she asked, I just want to say, so the recycling committee usually hosts the spring cleaning, so perhaps they can find a way to get the businesses to be more incentivized to join in, so, but thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd almost look at inviting the businesses to join our beautification project, the Adopt a Highway, if it's eligible for Scully specifically. Ask them to defer the costs on cleanup, because that does happen on a regular basis, if it's sponsored. So maybe that's a good conversation to have first.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
All right.
All right, Dan, you were gonna go to change order.
Okay. Yeah, so same project, change order one, so, as you know, this project has been going on for a while, so there has been some changes as we've gone, some minor ones, and then just some overruns. So, the, the change order I brought forth before the board tonight, which I recommend executing, includes winter pavement markings, there's a lot of unforeseen's out there with it being close to Devon's and utilities, there was some that we didn't even know what they were, and unmarked gas and a concrete duct bank that was unknown, so there was a lot that they had to.
A duct bank?
Duct bank, it's an electrical.
Oh, duct. I was gonna say, I haven't seen any ducts down there.
Yeah, ducts. And honestly, we, we were lucky that we had kind of the A-team from Onyx, and their, their excavator operator was really good. I have a good photo, I'll be able to use in presentations, with like four gas service lines and our water main somehow going underneath them without him disturbing them, so it was a tricky install, so that was a lot of, of work here that they had issues with for unforeseen's. And so there have been some overruns as well, temporary pavement being one of them, and some changes we had to make from the milling to, and reclaim, we couldn't do reclaim, we had to do milling. So, as you can see in my memo, the total amount of the change order is 339,393.76, and then I just put a note on the project budget since it's a large number. We have ample contingency in the project, the bid was about 2.582 million, and so including this change order, we'd be at 2.92 million, roughly, and the construction budget for the project is 3.6 million. So, there are some, gonna be some underruns as well, but in order to keep paying the contractor as we go, it is best to incorporate them in a change order now. So I'd, I'd recommend executing a change order, and it's for signature by the chair, I wrote board, and I pack it by mistake.
Okay, any questions?
No questions. I'll make a motion that we approve change order number one for the Air West Main Street Public Infrastructure Projects for Onyx Corporation, the amount of 339,000. the amount of 339,393.76, including the time extension for signature by the chair.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
The chair says aye.
Okay. Um, last item I have is Pleasant Street Drain Improvement. So at the very end of Pleasant Street, before you get to the new development, um, we have a drainage system. And last year, we had, um, blockage. It started backing up onto property. Luckily, it wasn't causing any damage. Um, so we investigated the drainage and we found, we TV'd the pipe. It was in very poor condition and collapsed at one point. So this project is to replace that drain pipe. You know, unfortunately, it's not something we wanted to be spending some drain money on, but we have to do it, otherwise it's causing a, an issue, property, private property issue. Um, so our engineering department, new town engineer, Matt, designed, permitted and bid the project. And the low bidder is CHB Excavating, who's up, who's going to be in town for the Third Street Water and Drain Project. Um, and the amount is $70,750. That'll come out of our storm drain upgrades budget. Recommend execution.
All right. Any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
I'll make a motion that the board approve or vote to execute the contract with CHB Excavating for the Pleasant Street Drain Improvements Project in the amount of $70,750.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. All right, thank you. Yeah, I'll get them tomorrow.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan. All right, so Robert? Local Devon's Community Committee. Committee.
Madam Chair, members of the board, at the last Select Board meeting under New Business and Selectmen Hood had, um, brought up for this meeting having a discussion on next steps with respect to the Devon's Committee, the, the local committee or the local effort. And, um, to frame it, as I put in your packet, there were a few materials. Um, the first was the original establishment of the Air Devon's Jurisdiction Disposition Study Committee back from November of, of 2018, which the board, um, approved that had sort of the scope and the composition of the committee. Um, since then, um, the, the, the second document is a request for expressions of interest to serve on the Air Devon's 2033 Study and Report Committee, prepared by Alan, Director of Community and Economic Development, who is here as well this evening. And then the third document, um, also developed by Alan, is a letter of, it says, "Letter of Interest to Serve," or an application, uh, form that asks some basic questions to get members of, of, on the committee. From my vantage point, I'll just offer, um, the following. Granted, um, that we started down the road on the local effort back in 2018. Um, one of the biggest challenges is getting, um, individuals onto the committee at that, at that point. Also, not using this as an excuse, but more of a reality than as things, um, it didn't get off the ground, then we had the whole pandemic. You know, the framework effort did, you know, move, um, forward, um, right around this time in 2018 as well. Um, a couple of just initial, um, I think, observations that have been discussed is, one is, I think, coming up with the appropriate, believe it or not, appropriate name for the committee, uh, the defined, you know, scope. And then, um, Alan's idea of, of course, the board would appoint the, the interested, um, residents to be on it. Um, and there's a couple. There'd be a selectman representative, uh, two members of the planning board, and, um, you know, five at-large, um, or five residents of which, um, one was from, uh, the air portion of Devon's. I think having something like this to sort of guide interest as well as to people, as to what people are, um, potentially, um, signing up for, I think, would, would be a, a good idea. So again, I, I think the first, you know, intent is obvious to get this back on the radar screen, especially in light of the recent, um, symposium and, and recent, um, you know, interests as we're moving forward in the effort. So I think that the question is sort of, of next, next steps. Because the biggest challenge has been getting, um, uh, and how do we approach getting folks, um, on this committee, which really, I think, is a, is a real working committee, if you will. There's a lot of work to be done, so.
So I view it kind of like, it's, it's almost like the, the master plan, you know, committee. It, it would kind of work in that same aspect. In my head, I could be totally off, um, you know, but everyone, you know, they're going to be focusing on little things, you know, because you're going to be going into the weeds. And I know there's, there's some that are confused as to what this committee is. Um, so this committee, as you know, is so that the people here are focusing on what air would get out of Devon's. Okay? What's out there, what's on the historical lines, how it would work. And then they would feed into the bigger, the bigger committee, which is with the one that I happen to be appointed to with Harvard and Devon's and, um, the DEC and Shirley and the shareholders. So there's like six shareholders altogether, stakeholders, as they call them, okay? Um, so I agree, the name does need a little bit of work because it's a little too closely aligned to, um, the Devon's Framework Jurisdiction Committee. And I don't think anyone understands the 2033.
Yeah, that, that's the big, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay, I'm kind of.
That's actually the biggest issue I have with the name that's at least in here.
Yeah.
Because, um, so if I may, sorry. Um, so first off, I know back in 2018, I volunteered to be, to lead this level committee. I would love to do that again, um, which is why I had asked to have it put on the agenda. Um, you know, the, the name is important. To your point, it is going to be, and Robert's point, it is going to be a working committee. It, it's a committee that needs to meet with all of, you know, department heads that could potentially be impacted, analyze a lot of potentials, um, whether it's, um, to your point, what, it falls within air boundaries, whether we move the boundaries around, you know, to accommodate, um, the current structure of the community of Devon's and, and how that would impact by the towns taking action. Um, but also from a community standpoint on our side is really looking at what is the trigger point on the, for the impact on services? So if, if there's a geographical impact on adding so many square miles to our community, what's the impact with each department and each service? What, you know, if there's a population tipping point where suddenly we're looking at additional firefighters, police officers, expanding the DPW, um, how the utilities work, you know? Devon's is a closed sewer and water system within its, its, its boundaries as it sits. So, um, this is going to be, I think Harvard's name for theirs is like the Financial Impact, Harvard Financial Impact Committee.
It's the Harvard Devon's Jurisdiction Committee, actually. That's their local committee. They've kept it kind of, they've kept it kind of aligned with the overall.
Okay.
Which actually gets a little confusing whenever Paul sends an email.
When I was on the finance committee, we were looking at Vicksburg Square. Theirs was called the Financial Impact Committee. Um, and that's what I would kind of akin this to, is really looking at what the potentials are, but also what the, the risks are at the same time.
Well, like, you brought up the DPW, okay? So if you look at the map, uh, which, we still have the map, um, it falls in the historical air lines. Okay? So one of the other things that the committee would need to look at is like, okay, if, if, you know, if you were to, to just get back the, the exact historical lines, you know, there's a building in, in the lines, I'm telling you. Um, but anyways, if you were to get those exact lines, well, how are those now new Harvard residents dealing with the DPW that now belongs to air? So those, all those things. And, and that's what I said too when we had, during the symposium, when we went on the little bus tour, which was actually quite fun. I said, you, you've got to go into the weeds, literally into the weeds, and then clean it up. Um, so in the 2033, just to kind of put it back out there again, that is when, um, the state is expecting the report. And the report comes from Harvard, Shirley, Devon's, the DEC. It comes from all the stakeholders together. So what this committee would be doing would be helping build that report that would be combined because the other towns have kind of got to agree. So if we want to take, which I've always used as an example, the 25% of Vicksburg Square that's in Harvard, what are they willing to, what, what do they want to trade it with? You know? Um, so, so, yeah, the name, yeah, I don't know, just, you know, still working on that. I personally, I, I, I think, because we kind of talked, I'm like, just kind of get it thrown out there. And then when the committee forms, kind of, everyone work together to rename it, um, so.
So I guess my other question, so I've offered, I, I know I was appointed back in 2018 as the local. I don't know if we want to take another vote on, if anyone else wants to take that lead. I'm perfect. I would actually, would really like to try and work and get this going in the next year.
All yours.
All right, thanks.
For sure.
Um, so what I can do as a next step for myself, um, as a part of kind of getting a little more information out there is doing kind of like a preliminary scope. And I mean preliminary because once, my envision is, once the committee gets together, the committee will work on what that scope actually is, uh, and probably also work on a name, I guess, at that point. Uh, and bring that back in the next meeting or two, just so we can kind of walk through it and give people a sense of what the anticipated workload is, uh, you know? And it is 2023 and we do have some time to work on it. But I think the sooner we get, uh, going, the better.
Clarifying question?
Yes.
Okay, so you don't want to start getting this out there to get people interested so that they can show up for the committee?
I'm perfectly happy doing that, but for another meeting, to bring a preliminary scope.
Did we put it in here? As far as like when the anticipated start date would be? Yeah, we, we put an anticipate, you know, which, excuse me. Yeah. Wait a minute. Something I might throw. Um, beginning in July of this year is starting.
It's reasonable.
I'm just asking kind of a clarifying question as far as, um, you know, getting this out there and getting people to, you know, kind of sign up?
Well, it is out there because it's in the packet and it is advertised, so, which is fine. But, but for, in people who may be on the fence as to what this would actually entail, I can put something together for a future meeting in the next, either next meeting or the meeting after.
Yeah, because it would, yeah, there's going to be a lot of planning and, and whatnot. This is, yeah, the whole kit and caboodle, so, yeah, I'm good. You good?
Yep. There's a hand.
Alan will work with you.
All right, thank you.
Right, Alan? I've just volunteered you because you're sitting there, so.
I look forward to working with you, Alan, thank you.
Yes, Pauline?
Thank you for letting me chime in on this very important topic. I know I'm not your favorite person in this town, but I would really like to participate in this Devon's project. I've lived here more than I've lived anywhere else in my life, almost 40 years. I predate the Devon's, um, closure, and I know that Devon's reading stack backwards and forwards. Scott, I, I remember when you were on, when we were on Finance Committee together. I have every document you ever produced. I have a toolbox of Devon's to be or not to be, for those of you who remember that. And this is very near and dear to me. Someone mentioned that 2033 isn't that far away, Pauline, and I thought, my God, it's less than 10 years. Um, so please consider letting me participate in this.
Okay, but I would just want to say this. I'm, I'm a little upset that you said that about you not being our favorite person.
Well, if, if you think otherwise, I'm happy to.
Well, I don't know if you're a favorite, but you're not our not favorite. So I'm just, you know.
Well, yeah, okay, on a scale of one to 10, I'll take that. But I really would like you to consider letting me participate in this. I probably have more documents than all of you put together, and I'm happy to produce them. Scott, I hope you have all of everything you did before. You did a masterful job when you were analyzing the financial part of it. I know that has changed. Um, but this is really important to me for what is the legacy that's left for the town, and I would really like to participate. Thank you.
Send a letter, right?
Yeah.
Send a letter in?
Yep.
Yeah. Just, you, send a letter in, you know, so that we have it, so that you're filling it out formally like anybody else.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, well, sounds like this is up and running. Okay, any other questions?
Can I just quickly clarify? I feel a little lost. What do you need us to do between? Do you need us to do anything before the next meeting?
No.
Okay.
I'll take care of it.
All right, just let us know.
All right.
Thank you.
If I need, if I do need anything, I will reach out.
You know where to find us, thank you.
Meanwhile, I hope people, if you're confused, just, you know, contact us, uh, so that we can unconfuse you. Okay, all right. You know, like how I said that? Unconfuse you? Because I get confused as to what the word was. Uh, all right then. Okay, next up, Town Manager's Report.
Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, good evening. Uh, you have my memo, um, brief tonight that has the two, um, town warrants that would approve, approve since the board, uh, last met. I don't have any action items, uh, for this evening, but under the administrative update, I would just offer the following. Um, first, a special thanks to all departments, uh, the Select Board, the FinCom, and all of the participants and residents in town meeting, uh, which was last Monday, uh, was a successful town meeting of which a lot of work goes into all year from various, um, folks. Um, we appreciate the support with the passage of, of all of the articles, uh, in the budget. Uh, we are in the process, as we are every year at this time. Uh, we'll be doing some, uh, review and, and debriefing of the budget, uh, process and the town meeting process. We'll be preparing for the fiscal year end, uh, for June 30th. Uh, it looks like there will be a few potential, um, RFTs needed before the end of the fiscal year. Um, we'll have a update for the board probably at the next, um, meeting, um, on that. And we'll need to coordinate with the FinCom. Uh, the town's munis system, the financial software that the town uses is undergoing, currently undergoing an upgrade. I just want to mention on Friday, May 5th, and we'll be putting out a notice this Friday, there are a couple of financial operations that will be impacted just on that day from, from the upgrade. And we'll be sending out a, a public notification on that. Most functions will, will continue, um, as normal. Uh, it's also that time of, of year, uh, that we'll be coming to the board for the appointments and reappointment, uh, process, um, over the, usually the June meetings, um, in the appointments and reappointments to boards and committees and so forth. And the, uh, finance manager at the next meeting will be presenting, uh, the ban for approval, um, from the Select Board. So, um, look, looking forward to, um, the closeout of the fiscal year and, uh, continuing, um, forward through summer. And before you know it, it'll be fall town meeting, but we don't want to rush the summer. So with that, um.
Wow!
Yeah.
You had to go negative.
Well, it depends on, well, it depends on how you look at it. Could be a positive. But, uh, we'll also have some more information shortly, obviously, with the passage of Article 29 on the municipal, um, on the aggregation, has stimulated a lot of, um, interesting questions since town meeting. And we'll have, as Ms. Antonellis clearly outlined at town meeting, it's a very public process with a lot of steps. So with that, um, no action items tonight. I don't know if there are any questions from the board on any administrative matters and if not.
On the Article 29, it would be my recommendation to like, at least every quarter, to have an update, uh, for the public, even if the update is, hey, tonight's update is, there is no update. So that way people are reminded too, that it is still being talked about and whatnot. Okay. Okay. All right?
All right. Nothing for me?
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, any New Business or Select Board member questions?
No. I don't have anything this evening?
No. Nope, I don't think I do. Okay. All right, next up is the meeting minutes from April 18th, 2023. I didn't see any issues.
Nope, I didn't have any either.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the April 18th, 2023. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the April 18th, 2023 meeting.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. All right.
Make a motion to adjourn at 7:10 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. We are adjourned. Good night, everybody.